Good afternoon and welcome to the Finance Subcommittee. My name is Zahira Nas, I'm a councillor for the Down Ward and I'll be chairing the meeting today. The meeting today is open to the public, we have received no questions or petitions from the public. Please can I request that mobile phones and other equipment is switched to silence so that not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today, if there's an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, can I ask members to introduce themselves? So we'll start from this side, so councillor Johnson.
Thank you Chair, yes councillor Johnson, City Ward. I'm substituting Dave for councillor Rove who sends apologies, thanks.
Thank you Chair, I'm councillor Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Leeds Valley, thank you.
Councillor Mary Lee, I represent Adult Ward.
Sheriff Mohamed Abrazin Ecclesall.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Mike Chaplin, representing Southey Ward.
Hi, councillor John Otten, representing Doran Topley and the Waste and Street Team portfolio, which is particularly hard done by.
Councillor Mike Leavry, West Ecclestone Ward and Vice Chair of the Committee.
Councillor Brian Lodge, Member for Burley Ward and also Co-Chair of the Finance Subcommittee.
Thank you everyone, can I also ask officers to introduce themselves, I'll start with you Gillian, please.
Thank you Chair, Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal and Governance.
Danielle Semenai, Strategy Officer.
Georgina Parkin, Service Manager for Strategic Carousing.
Jane Wilby, Head of Accounting.
Ryan Keyworth, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Rachel Marshall, Principal Committee Secretary.
Thank you very much, apologies for absence, councillor Marouf Rove has submitted apology and councillor Johnson is substituting for him. Is there any more apologies for absence? I don't think there is, no. Exclusion of the press, of the public and press, there's no items. Declarations of interest. No. So item five is minutes of previous meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to see the minutes rather than the previous meeting? Can members approve as a correct record for the minutes?
Agreed Chair.
Agreed. That's been agreed as correct record, thank you everyone. Item six, public questions and petitions, we have received no questions or petitions. So we'll move on to the item seven. Our presenting officer is Ryan Keyworth, Budget Monitoring and Financial Position, month three, thank you Ryan, over to you.
Thank you Chair, so the report in front of you sets out the council's financial position as at month three, so that's the 30th of June this year. The position we are now in for this financial year is a forecast of a 20.4 million overspend, so that's up from 19 million last month and 18 million the month before. It's worth the committee just noting, that's before the pay award, which is currently in the news, that some members of the committee may have picked up the offer that was made yesterday by the employers' organisation to the trade unions of an additional £1,925 per spinal column point, so every pay ban shifts up by that amount. It's not been accepted by the trade unions yet, but if it were to be accepted, that would be higher than the budget that the council has set aside to cover the pay award for this particular year. By around £5 million, I'm a little bit vague because we found out less than 24 hours ago and there's still a bit of work going on in the background, but you get a sense. So that would turn that £20.4 million forecast overspend into a £25 million forecast overspend, so just so that members of the committee are as up to date as I can bring you at this stage. Just a reminder to the committee, when we set the 2022/23 budget, we knew that there were risks around the timing and delivery of some of the savings that were built into it. We set aside £25 million of reserves to cover that timing and delivery risk, and if the pay award is approved, that £25 million of reserves is essentially spoken for. The challenges that we have in terms of budget delivery, as members will note from the report, are predominantly in adult health and social care and children's social care. They are our biggest budgets, so it's perhaps not surprising that those are the areas that are seeing the biggest overspend in pure numeric terms. The overspends that we are seeing are almost all related to the delivery of budget implementation plans, so exactly the challenges that we foresaw when we put £25 million of reserves on one side to manage risk. But nonetheless, you know, to have them spoken for at this relatively early stage in the year is not an ideal place to be, to put it mildly. There are however signs of progress in adult health and social care, for example, where the team there, the director there, has recruited agency staff to undertake some of the reviews, which have been causing a delay to the delivery of those budget implementation plans, but at this point in time, the effect of that work has not yet fed its way through into the financial forecast. That's one for us to keep a close eye on as we move through in the next few months. There are also some timing issues particularly in Sorry, I couldn't hear myself for a minute. Relating to a structure change that is now in progress and will certainly implement by the end of this financial year. So that becomes a timing issue within the Strategy and Resources Committee, for example. We are seeing increased energy costs this year, as the report talks about. At this stage, we are managing them using one-off money to deal with some of those cost pressures. A very long time ago actually, the council decided to try and manage the fluctuation in year-on-year energy prices to essentially insulate frontline services from the effects of that and allow for smooth progression of energy prices over time as they fed into main service budgets. The reality at the time was we were trying to get to a position where services focused on their usage of energy and worried less about the price of it. Clearly, the price of energy that we're seeing at the moment, we just cannot handle that way, but we are using some of the one-off resources we do have to manage this year's position. That obviously becomes a big pressure for next year, as members who are also members of other committees will know from the budget conversations they are having with officers in preparation for September. Talked about the £25 million of reserves that we've set on one side to deal with timing and delivery risk this year. This is the only year that we're going to be able to do that. The 20-25 million we need for this year, plus the 20 we spent last year balancing the books, the overspend from 21-22, plus the £15 million we actually used to set a balanced budget this time, means that 55-60 million of 70 million pounds that we did set aside is essentially spoken for. That means that the budget implementation plans for 23-24 that we're currently developing are going to have to be far more robust and to a much higher standard in terms of the cash delivery that's expected in year than we needed to hold them to for this year. So it's quite likely in fact that I'm going to reject some of the budget implementation plans that come forward simply on that basis. I suppose the other feature of that is because we are moving the budget process forward so much this year, there is an opportunity for savings to be brought forward early to policy committees for early decision to minimise that timing risk, I can think of one or two examples that will be coming forward to committees in the next round of meetings to seek approval, but we'll come to that in another time. So that's the overall corporate position. I'm just going to spend a moment on each committee in turn. For Strategy and Resources, the overspend in Strategy and Resources is really down to two things really, a timing of a restructure, which is now well in progress, and staffing cost pressures in legal services, in part caused by the challenges that we are having in recruiting legal services staff. That's one of the big challenges that service faces, we're having to recruit in some cases low-income solicitors on far higher pay rates than our normal staff while we go through the process of trying to find staff that we can recruit on a permanent basis. Adult Health and Social Care, as I've said, shortfalls there relating to budget implementation plans, a significant amount relating to case reviews. Agency staff are now in place and progressing those reviews and we wait to see the impact of that flow through into the numbers. There are risks, as the report says, around the cost of care going forward into the future with a process called a fair cost of care review which is underway. Education, Children and Families, again, budget implementation plans are the challenge there. A mix of capital expenditure which is taking longer than we wanted it to, some staffing issues in terms of being able to recruit the relevant number of qualified staff, but also continuing cost pressures when it comes to placements for children that we look after, so some challenges in that committee, very much so. In respect of housing, the general fund element of housing is fine, as you can see in the report, pretty much on budget. The housing revenue element of housing is not. And it's really linked to longstanding and well-understood by my members or closest to it challenges in clearing a backlog of housing repairs and maintenance work that really did build up during the course of the pandemic. There were challenges pre-pandemic, but the pandemic really caused that when it was much more difficult for us to access people's houses safely of course, and that backlog of repairs built up. There is the cost of doing the repairs, there is the loss of rent because houses are empty for longer than we would want them to be. There are claims for disrepair that tenants are able to make because of that, and even additional council tax that the housing revenue account is required to pay the council for vacant properties, so there are some challenges there, and I know the Housing Committee are working very closely with the officers in that area to try and bring that to a conclusion as quickly as possible. There will be major decisions required in that committee as part of the rent setting process and the extent to which significant cost inflation is passed on to tenants. And that will be a difficult set of decisions for that committee to make during the course of the autumn. The position it's in at the moment is still forecast to deliver about £11 million to the capital programme, I think, but the the challenge here is the extent to which that support for capital investment is able to support the council's ambitions to grow the housing stock, to even maintain the housing stock at current numbers. We lose something like 300 council houses a year to write to buy, so there's a cost of maintenance, or maintaining the stock, and also the cost of improving the council housing stock, for example, to achieve our energy efficiency ambitions as we move to try and achieve net zero as an organisation. Transport regeneration and climate change, and overspend in that committee relating to delayed implementation of the Clean Air Zone charging scheme. Hopefully that's a timing issue. There is a small loss of rent in the context of that committee's overall budget relating to electric works as well. And that's down to a couple of tenants who downsized or moved out during the pandemic. And it's quite likely, I think, that a proposal will be brought forward to change the letting policy for electric works to allow firms that, or companies, organisations that don't have a digital foundation to use that space as a means of closing that income gap. That's a policy that's been in place since the building was first opened some 15 years ago. Economic Development Skills is on budget, but that team currently relies on EU funding for some of its financing and obviously that is coming to an end. So there are challenges over the horizon for that team, and I know proposals have been worked on as to what we might do about it. Waste and Street Team is also on budget for this year, but with major inflation pressures coming around the corner into next year. Two major contracts in respect of waste collection and recycling and highways maintenance are both linked to RPI inflation, which at the moment is running at the thick end of 10%. Parks, Communities and Leisure Committee, again, on budget for this year, but there are some challenges in the future. Some of the money that they're using this year is one-off in nature and does run out at the end of this year, so nowhere without a challenge. Just very briefly into capital, the Capital Monitoring Appendix is attached. Really just a few things to note, there are still challenges that we face of over-optimistic programming that we continue to push back on and we're starting to see the effect of some of that. Lots of slippage and reprofiling particularly in housing schemes, doesn't affect the total delivery, in some cases doesn't affect the end date delivery, but does change the way the money is expected to be spent this year. There are some delays in the Heart of the City scheme that members will no doubt be familiar with, ranging from challenges in securing the right building materials to the runoff of delays from the pandemic. And on one occasion, in one specific case, a delay in receiving grant income for the pound's park, that's a delay, that's not an issue, it'll come forward in time. Chair, I think after quite a long summary from me, that's all I want to say and obviously happy to take any questions from members of the committee.
Thank you very much, Ryan, councillor Mohammed.
Thank you Ryan. Mine's on 1.4.1, Strategy and Resources, the 1.7 million overspend by month three. So if we're talking page numbers Ryan, it's either page 18 or small page six out of 18. My question particularly is around Legal and Governance. The explanation given for a £5 million budget overspending by a million is underlying overspend in legal services. Do we know what those underlying overspends are? What's driving it? That's a big number. It's budgeted to be 5.2 and we're spending, forecasted to spend 6.2.
Thanks councillor Mohammed, I'm conscious that the director of that service is sat opposite me, so.
Well I looked at you and did not look across the tone, but I'm sure the director of the legal services wants to respond, she can.
Gillian, you're probably better able than me to talk it through.
Thank you for that. We have actually gone through this in a level of detail this morning at our leadership team meeting, and there are a number of issues that are there's quite a lot to it, but there are a number of issues that are connected with the way that the budget is set up. So some of it is core funding, some of it is internal traded, some of it is external traded. So there are some fundamental issues in the way that it's set up, that we have, it's been acknowledged that it's unlikely that until we change that, we will never close that gap. There are some other issues that have arisen as a result of just the way we operate. So as a result of since Covid, there have been some areas within the legal services where our demand has gone up. And rather than not responding to that demand, we are trying to work with services to help them manage the demand, but rather than not responding, we have taken on that work and at a cost. So there are some areas where we've got a plan on how we're going to reduce that spend, but there are also some fundamental issues that actually we need a bit more work with Ryan, and this morning we went through it in some detail and we're going to sit down. I suggest actually that perhaps at one of the briefings I can give you that, you know, a greater level of detail and then you can fully understand what the issues are.
Yeah, thank you Chair, I mean that'd be helpful, I mean clearly, you know, we'd like you to come within budget, but at the moment you're a million pounds over. Will that, do you think by the end of the year you will be back spending £5 million, not £6?
No, that's the issue and that's why we've gone into it to a level of detail, we can certainly close that gap, but it won't close completely because some of it's structural issues that we need to resolve as an organisation rather than something that the team can do.
Could you elaborate a bit, what structural issues?
Probably not without going into a level of detail that maybe isn't appropriate here, it's to do with the way that the way that the budget is set up in the first place, so it's quite hard to explain without showing it to you. So I'm quite happy to do that, and if for transparency reasons, there's something that we want to bring to the next meeting so that publicly we can we can give a more in-depth explanation, then I'm quite willing to do that. I just think I'd struggle without having the detail in front of me and without you having the detail in front of me to explain it fully here.
Okay, thank you Chair, I do have other questions, but later down the report.
Thank you for that Gillian, councillor Lee.
Thank you, well mine's on adult social care, and I just wondered, one of the bips is dependent on us recruiting more staff, I guess, social workers. Are we overestimating how easy that might be in terms of, you know, we're in competition with four other, three other authorities, certainly within travelling distance of here. You know, if you live in Sheffield, you can either go and work in Doncaster or Rotherham or Barnsley, and agency costs are higher, I would imagine. So are we overestimating how easy that can be to recruit more staff? And the second question, just for clarity, are we going to be employing agency staff to get these reviews completed and then we will? Is that, or is it just an ongoing thing that we will always continue to have agency workers?
Thanks councillor Lee, we always knew it was going to be tough to recruit suitably qualified social workers for the kind of work that needs doing here. The kind of work we're asking them to do is really quite difficult stuff, it's about going to see customers and their families and talking to them about the care that they receive. Care that might have been put in place in the pandemic to keep them in their own homes, that might now require a different type of care, and it's not an easy set of conversations to have, so we knew this was going to be difficult to do. It is difficult to recruit social workers of that level of skill and experience, there's no doubt about it, and that's why we've ended up with recruiting agency staff, yes, they do cost more. I believe the plan is that we have agency workers in to address effectively a backlog of regular reviews and that then those staff leave and a regular annual review of care or whatever the correct frequency is reinstated using permanent council staff. That's certainly the plan.
Thank you, councillor Leavry, please.
Thanks Chair, on the same theme, you talk at the bottom of page nine about a target operating model being worked on, arriving at an optimum staffing level. But you also say that we'll need to consider the level of permanent funding available, so are they working within a financial target in doing this exercise? Or are they doing the exercise standalone and working out the costs afterwards? Thank you.
You're talking about the case reviews that we've, the adult social care case reviews, is that the?
Talking about a target operating model.
Sorry, whereabouts, say your councillor Lee.
Bottom of 19.
19. Right, so they're working, two things, they're designing an operating model for adult health and social care that does the work that's required to be done. They are doing that within a budgetary envelope as well. So they're trying to balance what might be very difficult to balance in the volume and nature of work that needs to be done and within a financial envelope, very definitely, yes.
Okay, so do they have the freedom to look at what the best solution was and what the additional cost would be?
So at the moment, they are working really hard to effectively get us back into the position we would have been had there not been a pandemic, that's the challenge they're currently dealing with. That's proving to be, well we knew it was going to be hard, it is hard to do. So that's the work that they're doing, the plan that they have is within the budget that we've set. The challenge we've got is the timing and how long it's taking us to get there, given the challenges that councillor Lee talked about in her question and my response to it. So my hope is still very much that the overspend we see in adult health and social care is a timing issue, not a long-term problem. There is always the potential for long-term issues to emerge, yeah, you know that.
Councillor Lodge.
Yeah, thanks Chair, it's on page 23, the Housing Committee, and it's just looking at, and you've made the point down there that while there's 3.1 million in loss in the rental income that's there, with the vacancies there, the added impact of a further 3.9 on there, so you know, we're looking £7 million on the HRA there, are we confident that the housing side are looking at that and they've got a plan in place to address this and bring that down? I mean, if that's the forecast now, are they thinking it's going to stay at that or are they anticipating that they can improve on that?
I think for this year that might be the forecast, if they can improve on it, they certainly will, they certainly have a plan. The director of Direct Services, Tom Smith, is working tirelessly to bring the housing repairs numbers down. The number of outstanding repairs is falling, it needs to continue to fall and fall faster. That will put us on a stable footing, so again, it's about making the variances, the increases in cost you see on here, one-off and timing in nature. And that's what Tom and the team are working hard towards. It's probably more one for, actually councillor Johnson's with us today, councillor Johnson's committed to pick up in a bit of detail, but definitely, that's certainly the plan as I understand it.
It's just, if I may Chair, it's just, when you're looking £7 million, if there's an opportunity to invest a million pounds in getting some additional support in there that achieves a saving of more than that, then, you know, you'd hope we're looking at those sort of things as well, innit?
If I could come in as Chair of Housing, Chair.
That's fine councillor Johnson.
Because, yes, I mean, thanks councillor, it's a really important thing, I just wanted to let you know that we'll have a briefing session on Thursday where we'll be going over some of this and it's very much in our sights at the moment. I think as Brian indicated earlier on, there's going to be some really difficult questions later on about things like annual rent increases, how much those are. So we're going to be weighing up frankly, issues of cost of living against, you know, the cost of money coming into the council in a big way, we're talking about millions here. So yeah, it's in hand, I think on the voids, you're talking about the sort of an invest-to-save approach, are you? If so, yeah, like that, and I can say that I've asked the director of Direct Services, who goes to the repairs, to be having a look at you know, what we can do to refocus on those, so the other dilemma that we've been looking at is whether we focus our resources doing repairs on houses where people are currently living or whether it goes on those as voids to bring them back into use and effectively increase the net supply of housing and address the needs of people who are perhaps in temporary accommodation as homeless. So yeah, all those issues are on the table really.
Thank you, councillor Otten.
Thank you Chair, I've got kind of two questions on different pages, shall I do the one after the other? So the first one is on page 19, just looking at the BIP savings relating to health and social care. It says in the middle of the page, 11 million savings required for 2022-23 relating to reviewing high-cost packages. And I guess the table below that shows that 5.3 is deliverable in that and 5.8 isn't. And just because you're giving us kind of end-of-year turnout figures, I just wonder how can we see the progress on that? You know, recognising that there are issues with recruitment and so on, how can, how can we expect those numbers to change if we see the progress we're hoping for? You know, is there something more you can say, I suppose, to assure us that exactly what's happening or rather than just that there is work going on? Because this seems to me where a large part of the problem is lying.
Fair question, it's something I was actually looking at this morning. There is a profile that the service have of when they expect those savings to come on stream in full run rate effect. Most of those are planned to be delivered, but it's a timing issue that you're seeing on the page here. So effectively, it's all delivered on the 1st of September, six months in. There's a chunk of savings planned to be delivered in quarters three and four, we will be keeping a close eye on that and I'm sure we can reflect that in the report for next time. We'll be coming back to this committee in early September with a month four report, so I'll make sure that we make an observation in the report then as to how that profile of work is going, which should in theory move that from red into something better than red.
I appreciate that, I'm still not very clear, so the deliverable 5.3 in that, whether that's, you know, savings that haven't happened yet but we expect to be able to make. whether that's, you know, savings that haven't happened yet, but we expect to be able to make, like you say, in September or whenever it is, or whether they are, you know, whether that reflects a pessimistic view or an optimistic view or, or whatever of, of what we expect to happen the rest of the year?
That's me not being clear, apologies. What we're talking about here is how much cash saving are we expecting to be delivered this year? If we delivered every review on the first of April, we'd probably have over-delivered the cash saving target. What we have is a plan to deliver those reviews during the year. That's currently saying that the cash saved this year will be about five point three million pounds. The run rate, in other words, how much are we saving per month multiplied by twelve? I hope will be nearer the eleven million pounds by the time we get to March.
Right, I think that's a little bit clearer. Um, but I'm not sure that it is. No, I, I think, I think the difficulty we have is that we're giving, being given end-of-year figures and we don't know what the month-on-month progress is. I think you're talking about when writing the answer to that. So, um, and obviously there's an expectation that some things will be delivered in the future that we aren't sure about, but we haven't a view of. So I, I, you know, I'm still not clear what to look for and perhaps future reports can reflect this. How we, um, you know, how we see that it's going better or worse or whatever than, than we thought it might? And what, how that would look on a, possibly on a month-by-month basis.
Just for clarity, we, we can give you for next month essentially, you know, what's already in the bank and what's still to be done. And if we're looking.
Thank you, thank you. So my, my other question is page twenty-three, again regarding the housing revenue account. I mean, uh, I'm, I'm slightly unclear of a couple of things relating to capital and depreciation. So the first is, there's a, there's a twenty-five billion put in there for depreciation. That's usually a notional accounting thing, but here there's twenty-five million real money we're taking out and putting somewhere. So where is that going and what is it for? And then we have a contribution to capital. And again, I, I suppose the question is, yes, it would be nice to expand and improve the housing stock. But if we're failing to maintain the properties people are living in, that they're paying rent on, isn't that necessarily the first call of the, the rental money they're paying? And therefore, if, 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 if our ambitions for the stock in general have to wait, then they'd have to wait. And if the fact that we're paying so much for dis-repairs and, um, and, and council tax and so on is, is a symptom of the fact that we're not putting enough into the repairs. And yeah, I'll answer that, I have another point on repairs.
Okay, so it is a housing revenue account, not a housing cash account, so depreciation is a valid charge in that case. It's not a coincidence that the depreciation number of twenty-five on the budget column is really similar to the contribution to the capital programme of twenty-four. What you would normally do is to create a cash surplus on a revenue account like this to fund investment. That's exactly what it's doing. So the theory goes that as, as your housing stock degrades, you, you replace and repair. The, the question you've asked about whether, you know, whether we should be spending the money we have on, on repairing the existing stock, I think really does speak to the, the question that councillor Lodge asked about whether, you know, whether there's an opportunity to invest-to-save essentially, which would do just what you've described. And councillor Johnson's answer is, is, you know, aligned with that. So I think, you know, the question perhaps is for councillor Johnson to take to the briefing you got on Thursday with officers to see if you're going to explore that.
I mean, so, so just, just developing that theme for a moment. I mean, if, if, if the repair service was performing well and, you know, there was lots of tenants' money sloshing around in the HRA and we said we want to be ambitious for our housing stock and improve it and expand it, then that, that would make sense. So if we're in a position as we are now that we're actually failing to deliver the repairs, repairs we should be doing, maybe that means we should, we should therefore, by the same logic, allow our stock to contract because we have to prioritise right now the repairs because people are living in, in, you know, in homes that are dis-repaired and not getting the repairs done. Is that a fair logic to apply to the situation?
I think, I think you've just described the dilemma of the, the housing committee here. We have a council house stock that reduces by about three hundred a year through right-to-buy for no other, if for no other reason. Inevitably, the condition of that stock inevitably degrades over time. The depreciation charge is a reflection of that, for, for want of a better number. There are people who need housing. The housing stock that we have is not necessarily appropriate for the people who need the housing. There's often a mismatch between family, families with a number, you know, who have a number of children versus a council house stock which has quite a few relatively small properties part of it. So that's the dilemma that we've got to try and, and meet here. And the task of the housing committee, councillor Johnson's committee, is to balance those competing needs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the answer and I, I accept that. So the final question is, I mean, this, this, this problem has been with us ever since we in-sourced the repair service in what must be twenty sixteen or thereabouts now, certainly a long time ago. And I'm aware that for many years, it may well still be the case, we had, for example, people on, on different terms and conditions doing the same job and vastly different terms and conditions that were to the point of being unfair. And this caused huge problems in morale and huge problems in productivity. And, um, does there come a point at which we say, look, we just made a pig's ear of this insourcing? Maybe we should just outsource the thing again and have somebody capable of running it effectively and spending the money that is being spent in an effective way getting the repairs done. Because we've, we've made a mess. We, we owe it to the tenants surely to outsource it again. When, when does that moment arise?
I think that, that probably really is a question for councillor Johnson's committee rather than a majority of finance to a primary.
No time soon if it's anything to do with me. Last thing we need is another massive outsourcing.
You don't care, you don't care about the state of the, the state of, you think it's functioning, you think it's adequate.
So I think the only thing that's particularly relevant to note is that, so in relation to what you described about the different terms and conditions, there has been a restructure of a lot of those within the repair service that took effect from the first of July. And I understand that, you know, health that's bedding in okay now, so there is progress. And there is progress being made on the outstanding repairs. It's just that there's a long way to go. And you can tell that just by looking at the numbers of repairs that built up over Covid.
Apologise Chair for my outburst and shouting across the room like that. I was just, I was just a little bit appalled. Yeah, I, I apologise for that. But I am, I am, I am appalled by the attitude that, that, you know, it's taken five years after insourcing to simply get people onto the same terms and conditions. It's absolutely outrageous. The way that service has been run is appalling. It's let the tenants down. And frankly, if we're not willing to consider the options to actually get it working again, that's a disgrace. Sorry Chair, that's a comment.
Thank you. Um, councillor Johnson, you put your hand up for a question? Okay councillor Elliot?
Thanks Chair. Um, thanks Ryan for the overview. We're obviously in a really difficult position. So I've got a question which is a more general problem about the specific committee. In full council in June, we resolved to implement a corporate opportunities register whereby we identify funding opportunities and partnership opportunities that might be available that we're not currently considering. I appreciate this, you know, it might be seen as an uncosted burden on the organisation, but I'm just wondering, are we carrying out that work if, if it's happening, bearing in mind the benefits it could have? Is that something that would fall under as a directorship or would it fall under specific committees, do you know?
I think my point, my advice at the time was it belonged to specific committees rather than a corporate infrastructure that needed building. The, what I am expecting though, and what I'm starting to see is that work happening as part of the committee budget proposals which are currently being developed. So one of the options that, that committees have to balance their budgets is exactly about seeking additional funding from other sources or working in different ways with partners, be they voluntary organisations, community organisations, or whatever, whatever works frankly, to, to achieve the task of delivering the services that the committee wants to deliver within the financial envelope that's available to it. We haven't as yet set up a, a corporate infrastructure to, to try and manage that. Wasn't something I particularly wanted to do for, for exactly the reasons you, you described. I don't want to really employ a couple of officers to, to go around and do that. If I see that's not happening at committee level, then, then sure, we'll, we'll look at doing something more centrally.
Okay, so it might be considered if it doesn't sort of happen on committee level?
If I think there's a gap.
Yeah.
And you as well. If we think there's a gap and it's not happening, then we'll do something about it. I'm, I'm hoping though that that's the sort of work, you and your colleagues raise it regularly at different committees, which is, which is absolutely right because it was a resolution that council agreed on. But I think the best place for it at the moment is committee level rather than a, a centralised infrastructure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, councillor Chaplin?
Thank you Chair and thank, thank you Ryan for this, this very detailed and yet another sobering report as we not only have to contend with a difficult financial settlement from government, but now roaring inflation that we've not seen for forty years. But, uh, there's other people have covered other aspects of the report. I'd like to look at page twenty-one, about halfway down, the position in children and families worsened from M2 to M3 by one point three million. And there are three sections there. One is about the, the forecast of, the forecast outturn is for one point three, three million worse. And one of the reasons which gobbles up half that amount is the seven hundred thousand that was expected from health partners. And so I wonder whether it was reasonable for those that were doing the forecasting to be counting chickens, so to speak, before they hatched. On the, um, the children's home at Aldine House, do we have any signs that recruitment is able to proceed so that the home can be run at full capacity? And also the, on the third point, the additional costs emerging in children's disability services? Can you outline in a bit more detail what, what those, those costs are that are impacting on the service, please?
Thanks councillor Chaplin. Um, the seven hundred thousand is, is a recognition that achieving it's going to be very difficult. We have certainly not given up on it. The, the new interim director of children and families, myself, and the director of integrated commissioning will, will be meeting to essentially have a bit of a planned, planning session to, to try and achieve that. So I'm hoping that that will go the other way before the end of this year. Make it a timing issue, not a trend issue. The secure residential unit at Aldine House, that is a one, that is a, that is a temporary issue that we've got with that facility. So yes, we are able to progress with recruitment. I don't know to what extent members know much about that facility, but it's, it's a secure children's home. The, the work that's done there is incredibly specialist and can be quite difficult to recruit to. So it's, it's really important that we get the right staff, staff in place to support that, that, that particular facility. That's being done. So that's, that's a one-off issue as opposed to a, a trend issue. The, the cost in, in children with disabilities is, is about two hundred thousand pounds, I think. Jane, do you know much about that? And if, if not, then don't worry. We'll, we'll, we'll fill in a little bit more detail for you in the minutes if we can. Please councillor Chaplin.
Councillor, councillor Leary?
Thanks Chair. A couple more questions, please Ryan. On page twenty-three about voids. The business plan assumes a rate of one point eight four percent and we're currently at three and a half. That's like eighty percent more voids than what we should have. It does sort of have plans in place to reduce this, but is that to reduce it to the business plan rate? Or is that, what, what is that to get to? Because in certain areas, and I can think of examples like Emerson Crescent where there's a significant number of voids in that area. It has a major impact on the community and what goes on there. Haven't got a plan to sort places like Emerson out and what is the actual target this year to get the voids down to? Thank you.
So the, the target from turnaround of a, of a property becoming empty to a property being filled by a new tenant is no more than six weeks. That allows for any repair and refurbishment work to take place within that time. The, the challenges that we, we, we've been discussing in terms of the backlog of repairs that's sprung, that's, that's grown up over the last few years mean that that turnaround time is now nearer twelve weeks, which is what's causing that issue. So the, 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 that voids issue is interconnected with the conversation we've had previously. It's, it's all part of the same backlog repair situation.
So will we get it down to the target rate this year?
I don't have a, I don't have a, in front of me, a path that says by the end of March, we will be at six weeks turnaround. That's something we can, we can bring back and I'm sure it's something that councillor Johnson will be, be talking to, to, to the service about when, when he meets with them as well.
Yes, clearly it has a financial impact, you know, there's benefits to be gained by getting these properties occupied. And of course, repair costs go up because places like this can get vandalised, so it's important. Okay, can I ask my next question? It's a quick one actually, on page twenty-seven, sorry. Yes, twenty-seven, about street lighting. Is there any more we can do with the street lighting arrangements to get that one point eight million pound bill down? Such as reducing the, the power again, or even looking at zone lighting or turning it off certain areas at night? Are there any plans afoot there please?
Don't know if there's any specific plans afoot, but I'm sure that's something that councillor Otten will be exploring. And I can see him nodding now with, with officers and colleagues on, on the Western Streets in committee. I think we did turn the power down a little while ago as part of, as part of a saving. Obviously, we can look at options. There are always safety considerations with street lighting, so there is a balance to be struck. If I remember the debate from a long time ago, but I'm, I'm sure that will be something that, that councillor Otten and officers and the committee will be, will be looking at as part of the budget proposals. But yes, it's, it's something we're going to have to consider of course.
Thank you councillor Mohammed.
Thank you Chair. I think initially my response, you know, I was going to ask you some questions around the housing repair, but I think my colleagues have asked you those. And the only comment I'll say is that a repair service that doesn't work leads to pensioners turning up every month to give us, ask us questions about why they've waited two years. So for me, I'm not going to be, you know, kind of doggedly sticking to one ideology or the other. I want a service that works and I think I support, I think it's councillor Otten's point, that there's going to have to be a point soon where you're going to have to review whether that decision was the right decision for the people of Sheffield, regardless of where you stand politically in terms of how services sit. But my question follows on from, on page twenty-four I think it is, from councillor Chaplin's around children, I think it was. Sorry, it's page twenty-two actually. Around this NHS, and if you look at, oh, there's no bullet points here, but it's that one point four saving from contributions from health. And I know earlier on when councillor Chaplin asked you the question, there's a reference to it, about seven hundred thousand. So what you're saying there is you've just not going to get the agreement in place this year. And it's going forward, it's going to continue to be a pressure. Realistically, where are we with these negotiations with NHS? Either we're going to get a deal with them that gives us that one point four a year or we're not. Because if we continue to just say, well, you know, we've got a one point four million pressure here, hoping that the NHS might come and bail us out. Where are we with that negotiation with them?
Without conducting a negotiation in public, early stages, there are some challenges with this one. The, the NHS believe that they fund us generously for adults and less so for children's. Their view is that that balances itself out. Our view is different.
Chair, I've got a question on capital, page thirty-one, but minded to the colleagues might have more questions on revenue. Page thirty-one, I think it is, hang on, I hope it is. It's around capital investment in housing ironically. Oh, this is small now. Yeah, four point six, council housing external wall insulation. Basically, the explanation is slip, where's it gone, slippage now, new tender required. Timescales? When are people in these houses that clearly probably need this external wall? Because I suspect these are single skinned houses. So with the cost of living crisis, et cetera, tenants are going to be ended up paying more. So do we know what the process is? So councillor Johnson, if you can help, when the tender's going out? Right, it's page 31 Douglas, I won't read very much on them. Page 30, oh god, you've got it in small print. Yeah, I've had to, page 31, 4.6. Council housing external walls insulation free, whatever that means. And it, yeah, transfree, there you go. And then there's a couple of numbers there around 2 million pounds. And then in the red bit or pink bit, it says slippage dash new tender required. My question is, when are we likely to get that tender sorted? How quickly, this year or next? Because clearly these houses probably will need that external wall doing to maybe give them a cavity. Otherwise, they'll be seeking out heat straight for the wall this winter. Not sure, councillor Johnson or Ryan?
I've no good answer to it, but unless you have, we could just ask.
It's about a 10 month delay because of that councillor. Most of the, what the report shows you, just numerically, is about a 10 month delay. So that's money we expected to spend this year, it's moving into the future. I can't remember what the specific problems with that tender were. I think it might have just been simply that either that no bids received or bids received were insufficient.
Get back to me with information then about, what sort of, unless you're over angle.
Yeah, I think it's connected to the point, a couple of points above it, which is also the tranche too. Because there was some work, result of CDS investigating implications of a compliance issue. And I think that, I seem to recall that may be why the tender needs to go out again. I may be wrong on there, but I think it has something connected with having to go back and re-tender because of the compliance issue on a previous work. Not exactly sure, but I think it may be.
Could you just check for us Ryan, how many houses are involved in this? Roughly geographically where they are? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get you with a minute, so an answer on that.
Thank you. There is a copy of the capital programme on the desk, which is larger, so if anybody wants that. Councillor Lodge?
Mine's a comment Chair. I don't know if anybody else has got questions to the officers.
I'll come back to you then. Councillor Lee?
I've got a question and a comment. It's just about the NHS 700k. I'm not sure quite what it's for, but I know obviously we have got pressure in children's disability services. And we know that those numbers are increasing because of the good work of the NHS. You know, whether it's learning disabilities, physical disabilities, babies are surviving and the pressure at some point comes to the social care. So there's some kind of balance has to be struck there in terms of ensuring that we are funding those services correctly. And I'm sure that's what the point should be making if that is what that 700k is for. So that's that one. Can you just make the other, should I make the other one?
You've described it very well, thank you.
Okay, so that is the case. And just the other one, if we are going to look at street lighting and turning it down, can we bear in mind that this council made a commitment to the protect women and girls from violence and harassment? And we just need to bear that in mind whenever we're looking at. I'm not against turning lighting down or making some modifications, but just let's bear that one in mind, that we are committed to the safety of women and girls.
Thank you councillor Lee. Councillor Levery?
Thanks Chair. Bearing in mind after first quarter of the period, we're now looking like we are up to our limit in terms of reserves, which is a fairer situation, pretty serious situation to be in at this stage. Are we going to actually have a formal review at month six halfway through? Because if we've gone beyond that, what do we do?
I think we'll keep a month by month eye on it councillor Levery. If we see the position continue to worsen and get beyond that 25 million, we're going to have to take some action to bring it back. And I won't wait till month six. I'll be talking to members about bringing it back before then. I think actually the next month will be quite a critical one. I'm expecting, you know, potentially some quite rapid movement on the pay settlement, which will crystallise an issue or not, as the case may be, over the next few weeks. And that will give us a clear position on that. If we're unable to bring some of the savings in, then we're going to have to start taking other action.
Thank you councillor Lodge.
Thanks Chair. It's, thanks to the officers for the reports. It's just a couple of comments on things. And just to pick up on just what councillor Lee said and around the street lighting. We did do a pilot some years ago when I was a cabinet member, when councillor Downing was my cabinet advisor, assistant, whatever we called him at the time. And we did it out in his ward and where we have Clyde Betts MP is quite vocal and he's not afraid to come and speak to me when there's things that he doesn't like in his constituency. And he didn't notice it, living in Mosborough. So I think there are, the levels of the lighting there, the looks, levels are sufficient that we can bring it down a bit. And I don't know how far we went with that in reducing them going through. But there clearly opportunities exist. And if you look at other authorities, they turn lights off on certain roads in different times of the evening and things like that in there. But my main comment, I'm just a bit disturbed to hear the suggestion that was coming from councillor Otten, that we look at outsourcing the repair service. I'm sure there will be members of the public, tenants and members of staff who are sitting here. And I'm just wondering if that's the official Lib Dem position that we're looking to start outsourcing. We in-sourced the repair service because it was cost efficient and it made savings that we could then deliver in there. It's not a great service. It's not performing how anybody wants. It's not performing to the standards that the tenants deserve and we know that. But some of the issues, why it's taken so long, if you were to look at it, there were employees that were in the repair service that were being paid bonuses. But the legal implication of paying that, you can't do that with equal pay. Because if you look at job families and similar situations across the council, you'd be putting equal pay claims across there and put the council at risk. And that's why some of these things have taken time. You can't just ride roughshod over employees' terms and conditions. And so it takes time to negotiate these things. And that's where, you know, I know you have a pathological hatred of conveners and that within the council. But that's where the conveners have been helpful in resolving this thing because they've been working on behalf of the employees in that service. Yes, it's taken a long time. No, we're not happy with it. And yes, the tenants deserve a better service. But I've seen, I've seen some reports that are going through that we are seeing an improvement in things. And now most of the terms and conditions issues, as I understand it, have all been resolved. But I just think we shouldn't be talking about outsourcing services there. And the other thing, I was flabbergasted to hear the suggestion that we shrink the council housing stock when there's people crying out for houses out there. And you're making a suggestion that we shrink the existing stock to focus on the repairs? We need to expand what we've got. We've got an enhancement programme. We're trying to build more council houses. And you're suggesting that we shrink the current provision and focus on that? We need to get it all sorted. We need to build houses. We need to get the vacant sorted. And we need to get the repairs. And I think the people of Sheffield would be quite interested if this is the official Lib Dem policy, that we're looking to shrink the council housing stock and outsource the council house repairs. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Lodge. Councillor Otten?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I mean, maybe it's the Labour's official policy to turn the streetlights down in Mosburgh because they're clearly bright enough there. I mean, I do think they are really quite dark in a lot of the city already. And of course, we are looking at it again and we're looking at ways that we can save money on street lighting. I don't think there's an awful lot to be saved there, to be honest, if I'm honest about it. There is, you know, most of the streets ahead money we pay is for debt. That is not going to change. Most of the rest is obviously the hard work of the sort that we need. Then there will be some sums and we will look at it. And if Mosburgh is well lit enough, I'll take that into account. I just need to react to that final point about the housing repair service. It has not been effective. It has not been effective since it was in-sourced. It was in-sourced on, you know, maybe if it had been in-sourced in a different way, it would have worked. And we've brought people over and maintained their terms and conditions to the status quo ante before. And I realise that the incentive scheme was stripped out before they were 2P to cross. And that's how collectively we got around the 2P rules, which I don't think is, you know, I think is a sleight of hand for which we have now, or the tenants have now paid the price. But the idea that this service has been adequate for the last six years is breathtaking. And I am amazed that the, if the trade union conveners are not as annoyed as I have been at the differences in terms of conditions between people doing the same job in the repair service, then what are they doing? I suspect they are as annoyed as I've been. But they have been fighting the same inertia that I've been fighting. So, you know, official Lib Dem policy, I don't know. But surely, surely, if a service is working before it was in-sourced and has been working less well since then, then that is a reasonable thing to look at. And if you're saying it's working fine now, well, I look forward to the drastic improvements in the figures and the housing revenue account. Because we are still overspending on repairs but underachieving. And if we're overspending and underachieving in any public service, that is a bad sign. You cannot say that is a service that is performing well. So yeah, absolutely. Let's consider outsourcing it. I can't see any excuse not to. Thank you.
Chair, can I just clarify? I never said the service was adequate. I said it's inadequate. It's not working for the tenants. It's not working for the city. And everybody deserves better. I didn't say it was an adequate service.
That's fine councillor Lodge. Councillor Lee?
Yeah, we've acknowledged that our difficulties in the housing service and the repair service, so let's fix it. Not hand it over to somebody else when the going gets tough. Because I remember some years back, when we had a billion pounds of decent homes work to be done, it was again Lib Dems who wanted it, hand it over to somebody else to do that work rather than working with tenants to get the work done, which is what we did. Wish Sheffield hope.
Thank you councillor Lee. Any further comments? Okay, thank you. The report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? If any member wished to dissent, please raise your hand. That's agreed. Thank you very much Ryan and Jane. Moving on to item eight. This Rough Sleep and Accommodation Programme will be presented by Danielle. Thank you.
Good afternoon everyone. I'm Danielle Simonite and I'm a strategy officer in the strategic housing team. So my agenda on the item starts at page 35. And we're recommending that we accept some grant funding of around 83,219 pounds, which is part of the Rough Sleep and Accommodation Programme. I'll just give a brief sort of overview of what the programme is and what the recommendation surrounds. And then obviously we'll take questions as Ryan's just done. So what is the Rough Sleep and Accommodation Programme, so known as RSPAP? So it's a joint funding programme that's been run by the Department of Leveling Up and Homes England. So it's a programme of money that is able to bid for move-on accommodation. Local authorities lead on submission of the bids for any registered providers that might be interested in providing this sort of accommodation in their area. So the programme has two sides to it. So capital money that's available for delivering that move-on accommodation. So any capital money is transferred directly to the provider. And then the second part of the money is the revenue element, which is available to provide tenancy support. And that has to be paid through the local authority. So the properties would be available for the cohort for a period of 30 years. And tenancies are for two years at a time. And so they're sort of a stepping stone between when someone might be in emergency accommodation or temporary accommodation. They're sort of moving towards that more independent living, but they're not quite ready for a general needs tenancy. So this just provides that move-on as part of the pathway to help them through that process. So what have we successfully bid for? So Sheffield City Council have placed a bid and it's been successful. And that was on behalf of the registered provider Great Places. It's for eight one-bed units and the revenue for them to provide one tenancy support worker to support those units. And the revenue for the tenancy support worker is available until 2023, 24. So the responsibility for the delivery lies with Great Places. And the responsibility for employing that support worker also lies with them. So as a minimum, we think that it'll help around 120 people over the lifetime of the properties, based on sort of how long they're available for and how long the tenancies would be for. So the capital part of the bid is sent directly from DeLok and Homes England to Great Places. And that covers them purchasing the units and delivering them. And the grant terms require that the revenue aspect of the bid is transferred to ourselves, Sheffield City Council. And we then transfer it on to Great Places. And they'll then use that to fund employing the tenancy support worker. So the programme's provided us with a really good opportunity to work with RPs and to provide additional provision of this type in Sheffield. Move-on accommodation is something that we really need in the city to help that smooth pathway and to sort of move people out of emergency accommodation and help them into that more independent living. And it's particularly useful for us to be able to work with RPs on this. So it starts to move us away from that heavy reliance on Sheffield City Council homes for homeless people. So in terms of the funds, the revenue funding is a total of 83,218 pounds across the three years. And we will transfer those amounts annually. So in the first year, it would be 16,251 and then rise into 33,152 and then 33,816. And the reason that the first year is so much smaller than the second two years is because obviously it takes them time to get the units on stream. They don't need to employ the support worker for the first half of the year. So the report just recommends that the council accepts the revenue funding and transfers it directly over to Great Places. And that will allow them to fund the support worker that they'll be putting in place.
Thank you Danielle. Councillor Johnston?
Thanks. Yeah, I was just going to say it's good news to have an increase for social housing stock, especially for this cohort of people, free up others and it's bringing money, resources from central government. So that's good. So first question is, can we have more of it? And second thing, I just want to clarify actually, are these going to be let by Great Places? Or are they going to be secure tenancies with the council?
So I'll take the first part of the question. So there is more of it available. So this is the first round of funding. I've not mentioned it upfront because I didn't want to sort of confuse things, but there has been two further rounds of funding. So the second round, we as Sheffield City Council bid for 15 units of private sector leasing. So although we're leading on it, again, it is widening that stock. So we'll be working with landlords to bring those properties on stream. They're not as long term because it's a leasing scheme, but we've been successful on that. That would have two tenancy support workers attached to it, so a similar level of support. And then there's also been a third round of funding. So in that one, we've again worked with RPs. So we've got action providing 15 units, very similar to the Great Places scheme. And then we'll be bringing on scheme six of our own new build units. So although they are council-led, it's still adding to the stock. Again, tenancy support worker in place to support those. And we've also worked with a roundabout, which I'm not sure if people are aware of that. But it's a charity that works with young homeless people in the city. And they're going to bring on, I think it's eight units, again, private sector leasing. Because that's the model that they sort of use. And then to take the second part of the question, in terms of the letting, it would be tenancies with Great Places, but we are working very closely with them of the tenants that would go into them. So we're putting sort of a new letting section in place. So it's a bit of both really. We'll be working really closely with them. And we'll also be working really closely with them sort of at the other end of the project. So at the end of those two-year tenancies, to look at what kind of options they might have to move into. Because we know we've got limited stock of our own. So trying to help, you know, get Great Places or other tenures in place.
Thank you councillor Chaplin.
Thank you Chair. I welcome this scheme. And it's very pleasing from Doug's question to learn that there are more in the pipeline. Just going back to, if I can be a bit nitpicky, on page 38. The first year is down as 2021 to 2022, which has passed. So has there been some slippage with the scheme or is this just a typo? That it should actually run on into the next financial year of 24, 25?
Yeah, no, it's not a typo. There has been a little bit of slippage on providing the units, but they are on with getting those ready. I think they've completed on some units. I think they've completed on some units already out of the eight and they're on with getting the rest on board. And they're on with getting the tenancy support worker in place. And we've had conversations with the Department of Leveling Up about what happens to that funding, because obviously we're outside of that financial year. And they've said that it's fine to transfer that money for them and that should hopefully be, let them, employ them sort of after the twenty three, twenty four for those extra six months. Hopefully that answers your question.
Can I carry on? Because that, that, that was very helpful. Um, I'm mindful that a lot of people who are homeless and on, on the streets do actually, um, present with a range of, of needs, uh, maybe addiction related, mental health, um, other physical health issues. Um, so there's a lot of complex needs there. Um, and I just wonder whether the, the support worker would be sufficiently well equipped and experienced to help people in those, in those circumstances? And where, you know, where necessary, get people referred to the agencies and, and healthcare and other support that would be needed?
And, yeah, we'd hope that it'd be someone that would, um, be able to do those sort of things. And in terms of the level of support, so it's one support worker to eight, um, houses. So it is a really high level of support. It's similar to our Housing First, um, scheme that we've got on in place, which is also for, for people with those complex needs. So we'd, we'd hope that part of their job, the way we've sort of worked with Great Places is, one, it's sort of getting them ready for that more independent living. But two, it is also linking them up to those other services, which we know can be difficult for this sort of cohort. And so that's why we've been really pleased that we've got sort of one support worker to eight, because it is quite a high level of support, so they'll be able to provide that.
Can I just have one more, more bite? Uh, I mean, certainly in my ward, um, I've had a number of issues of vulnerable people being cuckooed, where they're preyed upon by other unscrupulous people. And I do worry with this scheme that, um, we might be setting some people up for that unless we have contingencies and support in place to make sure that that doesn't happen to, to these residents who are trying to re-establish themselves.
That's something that we've been really conscious about. So that's one of the reasons that we have gone for one bed units. And because the advice that we've sort of been given is any, any higher beds than that, it really encourages that sort of cuckooing, um, style behaviour. And we've also been really careful about how we work with Great Places and how we'll continue to do that on the future, um, rounds about where we place, where, where the units are placed. And so we've been really keen to avoid the city centre and sort of within half a mile. And because we know that that's where that kind of sort of associates and cuckooing sort of, you know, vulnerable people shouldn't be in that, um, sort of location. But that being said, we have still considered, um, you know, links, transport links, and making sure that there's services in where the, the units will be. So, yeah, avoiding the city centre, but in, in areas that have got really good transport and employment and service links.
Thank you. Um, councillor Lee?
Thank you. I, I welcome this scheme as well, that was very much needed in the city, isn't it? Um, in terms of the, the difficulties some people are having to face. But I just wondered, will Great Places be monitoring and reporting to us on the progress of those individuals? And looking at what it says about what we'll expect, you know, it'll be, they'll be happy, they'll feel less lonely. It's all about feelings. Are we going to be looking at some harder progress in terms of, you know, what we'll expect from Great Places? I know it's an enormously difficult job because my councillor chaplain's outlined all the difficulties and more in dealing with people who've gone through whatever these people have gone through and ended up, um, unable to maybe care for themselves at this moment. Sure they are capable, if given the right amount of support. So what monitoring would we be doing, be doing with them, Great Places?
So at the minute, we're monitoring the progress in terms of getting the units on board. But it is something that we'll be working really closely with them on going forward. And monitoring sort of, um, the initial letting right through to making sure that the move on from the tenancies is, is the right place for somebody to move on. And making sure that within those two years, um, we're working really closely with them and to make sure that the tenant's happy and, you know, ready for that sort of next step.
So could you just, will it be things like can now pay their bills without, independently? Can now go shop independently? Can now, um, take care of their property independently? Will that be the, the, the goals we're working towards as well as feeling happy because you're in a place of your own?
Yeah, yeah, we can take all those on board and it's about preparing them for every aspect. And so, yeah, definitely.
Thank you councillor Levery.
Thanks, chair. Um, yes, I too am really pleased to see this, this come through. Uh, one question on page thirty seven, which was about contacting registered providers. And Great Places were the only one who felt they could deliver properties within the timeframe? Was that a constraining factor or were there other reasons given as why they didn't bid?
At that time, it was the main factor. So the first round of the programme was very tight to get the properties delivered. And the second round that I've talked about, which we're working with Action, Roundabout and ourselves, has got a bit of a longer lead in time to get the properties sort of on stream. And so that, we felt that we've got a bit more of a sort of interest from different parties. And it obviously allowed us ourselves to look at the sort of properties that we could provide. And but there was a number of other constraints when we were working with the registered providers in terms of the city and the rising cost of purchasing the properties. If they want to purchase them on the open market, the costs have just gone up and up and up. And, and that was one of the reasons. But we did cast our net far and wide. And we worked with all the registered providers in the city. And we've also got really good links with the Department of Leveling Up and Homes England. And they worked with registered providers across the country and to see whether there was anyone that might be able to sort of move into the market. I mean, Action, for example, I don't think they've got much stock in the city, but they have come forward for the sort of later round. But unfortunately, the constraints in the first round just meant that it was only Great Places that were able to come forward.
Thank you. So do we think we will get a better response next time we want to go forward and look for this initiative? Or are we going to left with providers, personal providers not able to do the job?
Um, we would hope, and the feedback that we keep giving to Homes England and the department is that the longer, um, time that they can give for the units to come on board does help. And that that would be our preference. And we've also sort of spoke to them about whether this could be a more rolling programme rather than, um, sort of a set programme with deadlines, whether we could just keep having those ongoing conversations. And they've not got back to us on that, but, um, we'd hope that there'll be future programmes similar to this and in the future that we would be able to continue to work with them on.
Thank you. There's no further questions, any comments? Councillor Lodge?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, I'm really supportive of this, I think it's great. And congratulations to the team for the work that you've done on this, uh, in securing it and for putting the bids in. I hope you're successful with the other bids that go through. It, it, it's great that we're getting these and the work that you're doing on behalf of, of, of the city and the people that need it, and putting these bids together is going to pay off in the longer term.
Thank you very much councillor.
Councillor Elliot?
Yeah, just a quick question. Again, you know, echo everyone, this is really good work. I'm glad that you're going for one beds because that's obviously what people really need, isn't it? It's that stepping stone, people need to be sort of on their own. I'm just wondering, you know, when, and you said that you've got, um, you know, you've identified areas that are sort of, you know, within communities and, you know, works, closed buying shops and whatnot. When, um, when the areas have been identified that you're going to be putting these in? So do you let members know in advance just in case we have questions from sort of members of the public?
Yeah, I think we would. And in terms of the eight units, there would probably be like just one in, in the area. And so it's very small compared to some schemes, but I think so, yeah.
Thank you. There's no further comments. The report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? If any member wishes to dissent, please raise your hand. The recommendation is agreed by all members. Thank you very much Danielle.
Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you. That was the final, final item on the agenda for today. Thank you all for your attendance. The next meeting for the finance subcommittee will be on Tuesday, sixth of September at two PM. Thank you very much.